...the top, DeSires City Council Joint Regular Committee meeting for Thursday, July 18th, 2019. Members present: Ben Meyerbaum, Kevin Myers, Mark McKeever, Monica Sack, and Andrew Schock. DeSires City Joint Regular Committee meeting was called to order by Andrew Schock at 6:02 PM.
Hold on.
Two bucks.
Two bucks?
It's two bucks.
They're turning after the latest? Okay, then we may well come back around to like that. Bruce is gonna be here.
He said he was.
Truka.
Oh, Truka?
Where's Truka? What? You're not ready. Okay, you canceled.
We were told, I knew he wasn't gonna be here.
I'm calling back. Hold on a second. See if the answer's just go.
Well, he can come, we're going to.
Yeah.
He's driving, he's driving so he won't answer. Don't touch him right now.
I'm not expecting him.
He did all this right here.
And his vehicle's old enough, he doesn't have.
All right, back from our timeout there. Any public participation at this time? If not, I'll move on to the order of committee business and call Service Committee to order at 6:03 PM. And first order of business on service is the raw water line.
Do we have any discussion for that this evening? We anticipated not having a form for it, okay? Same thing to do with water expansion?
So we'll move on, and water expansion was the next piece. Are we passing on that?
No, we were told we wouldn't get form, so we don't have any.
All right, well, if that's the case, I will adjourn the service, or adjourn the Service Committee at 6:03 PM.
Well, it's 6:04, and I'll start that, and Mr. Brandstetter, I guess you can step right up about the stormwater separation. Group three.
Is he gonna do this?
So he's passing the buck to you.
Yeah.
I guess that's, when you've got the name on the business, you can do that.
That part I enjoy. We don't have a lot of little maps, but it'll cover.
Can't see that in front.
And basically, over here. As far as our group three A, we're ready to go out to bid for this. That's the water zone, Jefferson.
So this is part of our stormwater separation project, this one was just today.
That's correct. And part of the EPA, your administrative order with EPA is from a few years ago. It is also part of zero percent money, that's funding one and two. And I presented, what's the budget funding?
1.19 bucks.
That's what's on the, we do have a breakdown of the projects.
Oh, yes.
And they can see that on there.
Okay. So what do you need from us, Mr. Mayor?
Group three A is where?
It's three A is right here in red, it's Washington Street, Jefferson.
Hopely.
Hopely.
Alley's.
Alley's, John Street.
And a little piece over there on Winchester.
Yeah, actually, because we, some projects have come in under budget. Winchester was not, and everything was east of the railroad tracks. Group two came in under budget, so there was a real problem with the house down there, and sometimes they got too into where they shouldn't, and this will help.
So this is Winchester that's east of the, or west of the.
Yeah, south of, southern. Yep.
It's a little short old stuff. That's when the front just bad, when you, we think we'd squeeze that in.
What do you plan on breaking ground?
Well, in the year, last year we go out to bid, and the PTI, the EPA, my head, I would think whatever kind of meeting. And in construction, you know.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
So, to just verify, you're, we're talking about, you need permission to go to bid, and award the contract, and you're thinking it'll be a fall project then?
Yeah, wait, probably a late fall break ground.
Okay.
How long would it take approximately? But you can't.
Yes.
Two months?
Yeah, well, probably, I'd say probably closer to three. It's all weather permitting, everything too, so.
It all depends on what running through everything.
Right, exactly.
Mr. Trump?
Yes.
So what are we doing in this area? Are we planning on putting in a new sanitary, or are we putting in new storm?
Both.
Are we really going?
We're separating out sanitary from some of the areas of storm, and in other areas we have to add some storm because of some flooding issues as well. So we're separating and adding storm two.
Like what's, uh, the, like the two, like the short street on. Winchester, you're adding a storm to that one?
Yeah, sanitary.
And then, yeah, that's sanitary, but then down here on Washington Street, down for the bowling alley, there are four catch bases that are tied into the sanitary system right now. We're separating that out, and we'll reroute the storm.
Okay.
Which will, will probably take this, this direction down.
Take us out.
Yeah.
All right, well, there's no other question?
Now, when you did the group, I guess, yeah, group one and two, you met with the, with the homeowners? Were these people involved in that?
Uh, no, you don't have the public hearing we had?
Yeah.
No, they got just included one or two.
And group three, you were at that last public hearing we had?
There was some, but there was one guy that was across the street, but I don't know if you should touch base with them or something.
And the public hearing department, I was group one people, because we needed all those easements. So I was trying to get them all together, these ones were ready to be signed, and.
So we need easements for group three A?
Uh, don't believe so. There might be one or two, one from Mr. Massey and the other from DeSires Rail.
Massey and group two.
And that'd be part of the, just rewriting some storm from the DeSires Rail area.
And here, you add some of the DeSires here, and the area improvements get on the radar when we get in.
So then, Mr. Mayor, then when we get ready to, we're gonna get those people together, we'll call them all in, like we had with, we did it over on Charles Street, we did it up on Plymouth Street, we'll call them all in here, and have you go through it with them. As to what they could expect, and you'll be keeping traffic, I assume, open as much as possible while you're doing this project, as you have in the other areas, okay?
No, actually, are you gonna, I do have a question. Are you actually going down Hopely itself? I mean, it, I mean, in the street itself or?
Yeah, there'll be a new sanitary line coming down Hopely Street.
Okay, I have one more question. No other questions? Anybody entertain a resolution to authorize the service director to go out to bid? So, every second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Done with you today. Never had this moment.
Yeah, I do, sorry, I do have a set of drawings down in my car. I do have a set of drawings down in my car, if anybody wants to see them after.
No, it's never too late to ask a question.
I just have one quick question for you, Joe. Hopely Avenue, when we're going down through there, that was just made by the state a year or two ago. What are, what's our plans for that? Are we gonna just seal over top of the small area that we're gonna trench out, or?
Uh, believe we're gonna, I think I said the lane, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, mill and a whole.
Mill and repay that line? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I need, also I need to entertain for the.
Well, normally when we go out to bid, we have a resolution to request legislation to go out to bid, award the contract, draw awards, and all of the above.
All of the.
So we need to expand your resolution, or do a second one to kind of cover all those things.
Well, I need the first one, so we'll do the, I need a resolution to, another one to.
Uh, award the contract, draw awards, and issue funds from the.
So moved. Okay, any other discussions? Otherwise, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign, motion passed.
Just a moment. Mr. Truka, I wasn't aware that they had canceled these before. I texted you today about coming to the meeting this evening, so they did not appear to do any discussion on the water line or the water expansion, okay? Okay.
All right, with that, I will adjourn at 6:13.
Public lands buildings, we need to order at 6:13. Looks like reservoirs. This is the whole thing we went over before.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a brief update for you. Mr. Murphy, Todd Murphy had previously inquired with us, and we discussed possibly transferring those reservoir properties to him, or any other owner. Mr. Murphy had requested a conversation with ODNR to see what their requirements would be. ODNR invited me to attend because they want somebody, I believe a representative of the city there. So I traveled down there yesterday, had a couple hour meeting with ODNR representatives, a whole bunch of them. The gist of it was, they would be amenable to the city transferring not only the property, but its liability for the property to a new owner. They were very clear, however, that they would need specific plan of action for wherever the new owner would be, and they were also extremely clear with the fact that they needed to see that inundation study from us before they could agree to anything, especially the transfer, because that's what's gonna involve that. There were a couple other options that would not necessarily require the inundation study, such as including draining reservoir, and looking at the dam, and breaching in, and all those sorts of things. They would still require other studies, such as the structural stability of what would be left, and the stream, and all that, but we still have to do the inundation study for the other three reservoirs, and this would just be an additional add-on to those. And the line share that's in those three D's. But the gist of the conversation was that they would be amenable to that, and that was good news, I thought. We are scheduled for, we appealed their director's order on timeframe and some other things. That is coming up. Our appeal hearing date is, I think, October 17th, mid-October. So we'll have that hearing then. I would say that must be have something pretty firm, kind of a firm plan, and I don't think that's gonna go well for us, but we'll try. That's all I have on my mind.
And this, this hearing, yours will take place where?
Uh, ODNR, I haven't worked that much.
Whether we have the interested parties that were able to take it over, would that help our case?
Yes.
I mean, if you're saying that it's gonna be.
Yes.
Something quite physical to that.
If we have a plan, or if we can even tell them that we're working on a plan to transfer, I think, I think they're fine with that, and they indicated that they would even extend times and work with us to develop that. The, their prerequisite, if you will, to getting that is they wanna see that inundation study. That is, that was the one thing they kept coming back to, that we need this, we need this. Unless you're, you know, ready to, you know, rip it out, maybe you need other things, but we need this inundation study, they're just, they're out, and they kept returning to that. We can do this if, so, there, I think there are options on the table, which is good news to me, but everything kind of, they're pointing back to that, either inundation study or do it later.
Does the inundation study have to be completed, or does it just have to be in the process of being done?
I don't think we can get it done by that October date, but I think if we have a plan, if you come, even if we have a plan to get it done, I think that's gonna go a long way. I mean, that would simply be my interpretation of it, that that is, you know, that's, that's where they're really, their hard focus is right now. We've undertaken that, we have done a bit of that for the three D's. And that's, I asked the, earlier today, I asked Bruce to kind of work out for us what the numbers we're on. You know, we have to do three anyways, how much more to that?
Andy?
Is Brandstetter, Perrell, the one that would do the inundation study then?
Yes, so we've been working with them.
Do we have an idea of how much that would cost?
Yeah, they presented that at that last meeting we did over the dam, I think we got handouts on all that.
Yeah, we've been able to clarify a few issues, so I see that coming down. But we, this may, may, I think we gave you a range.
Right.
Couple times, and firm work on.
I don't recall what that was.
A hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand estimated fees, inundation modeling and mapping.
Yeah, it was, that, that whole series of stuff needs to be done to make that thing happen.
That the emergency preparedness plan, the H gathering, and all that go together, right?
And it's for all.
You have it in your pocket.
It's for all four reservoirs, not just because of the way they are drained in the same grid, they're draining each other. Inundation study is needed for all four reservoirs, not just for reservoir number two.
I'll just continue with my questions, but if, if the pines were to be drained, is the inundation study necessary anymore for it?
Not for the pond.
For, no, we still have to do the other three. If the cost, the cost on the inundation study, would that for all of them, and not just the pines? Correct. So is the pines a fourth of the cost approximately?
Yeah, it would be less than, because we just really expected from where the river goes to ponds, and not the other three. I mean, you could, we'll, we'll work out something that, part of our charge would be to come up with what happens if ponds drop down, or a pond, you know, so in fact, you might explain what we're.
Yeah, and Andy, I jump on that point too. They have meetings about, oh, here's a cheap way out, but they were ready for that, I think, because they, they explained, even if you drain it or breach it, then after the fact, there, there was other studies that they would require. Stability studies on what's left of the dam, and what's left of the embankments, and removing the dam pieces, or other, other things that would be done to breach it, the specific requirements for the breach, and then redoing the stream bed, depending on how we did it, even some even required, we need a stream bed. In fact, jumps into a different agency data, it won't affect so much, but then EPA kind of would get them on at that point. So, yeah, I, I see that as an easy way out, you know, right, you know, since you got down there with the sledgehammers and dynamite sticks, but, yeah, we were, they had explanations that, you know, there's another bill coming to do that.
Yes.
If we were to breach that as a slow drain, how long would it take? Did you, I remember you said, and I can't remember.
We estimated that it'll take about six months.
To do a slow drain?
Yeah. And, but that was all based on a guess as to what EPA would tell us, flooding, we could release it at, so we estimated about six months.
Andy, hands.
Bruce? So what's, what are you asking for the next step for us to do now?
I'm gonna ask you briefly, really, I just kind of went up to you and what, how that meeting was, let you know, let you know that that is, that transfer of this liability is an option for us. And I did ask Bruce and Jeff to maybe work out those numbers of three versus four, because maybe that, that variable may give some idea of what our costs are in that, in that reservoir.
Anything else? All right, this will move on to bicycle racks.
This is meeting.
Okay.
I've had a certain someone who'll go, Gable's been looking on the internet on Guff deals to try and find some deals on bicycle racks, and there just really hasn't been any. So I came across this the other day from a company that sells bike racks to cities and parks and stuff like that. This kind of bike rack, it's a hundred and fifty bucks, the mounting hardware and stuff is roughly about another fifty bucks, that's roughly a two hundred dollar bike rack. I would like very much to have one put in at City Hall. I think it'd be a great idea if there's one near the art park, and I think it'd be a great idea if there's one maybe like a Pifney Park or somewhere near Millennium Park. So I am willing to buy one of these if you authorize it to be installed at City Hall, and we have city crews professionally install it, so that it doesn't, you know, so that I didn't do it, it doesn't, it's a bike rack. I, I'll either pay for the other two, or I'll find people to donate and buy the other two if you'll authorize those as well. But the only city money I'm asking for is the other crew to put it in, so it's done right, and, and your permission to use the public lands to put it in.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll buy one also.
So that, that's three, that's three parts, and you can buy more if you want, but those are the three parts that I think, you know, people use frequently. And if you were at the police auction and seeing how many bikes are out there, just that pile of bikes, it's amazing, just amazing how many people are losing their bikes, so I think it would be beneficial to have these, especially just three places.
Yeah, any discussion? Give our blessings, then.
Yeah, that's it, definitely need to be on paper, just kind of needs to be.
Committee in favor of that? I'll say that. A nod, it works, so it looks like we're all in favor. Okay, well, thank you guys for that.
Thank you guys, I'll give it to donors when we get these orders.
We'll win this by full council, and it's to you too.
We'll do.
With that, well, recess public lands in town at 6:25.
6:25, we call the health and safety committee to order. First item up is a liquor transfer at Smokies Tobacco and Brew. Looks like they're just changing ownership, but keeping the same business model, same DVA. Is there anything you have on that?
No, it seemed like it was just a kind of a transfer in the corporate entities, so.
Um, do you have any reason to oppose?
I, I do not. We, we have, I don't think we've ever had any problem with the Smokies other than the one time somebody drove into the building, but that wasn't their fault, so.
I'll make a motion to, or go to the hearing.
Motion before we do the hearing is on the floor, we have a second. All right, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, state aye. Aye. Oppose, same. Motion passes. And then we move on to any traffic control map change. We'll see here, the letter dated June 24th to DeSires Council, Dear Madam President, the City of DeSires Traffic Commission would like to refer several items to council. I'll read the portions that are to health and safety. The traffic commission would like to recommend amendments to the traffic control map, number one, repeal 6267, dated December 20, 1967, no parking of the motor vehicle, saw heads port be permitted on the south side of East Southern Avenue from Marion Road, east to West Stone Street in City of DeSires, Ohio, and replace with no parking of the motor vehicle, saw heads port be permitted on the south side of East Southern Avenue from Marion Road, east to the city limits, and no parking on the north side of East Southern Avenue from West Stone Street to forty feet. Please note that the drop off signs on the north side of East Southern Avenue will be removed, and the strait will be redone. Then number two is amendment 6377, dated December 8, 1977, quote, "to provide for the full-time operation for electric traffic control device at the intersection of Marion Road, Beale Avenue, and Fairview Avenue, and no turn on Red on Beale Avenue and Marion Road in Fairview Avenue, on Fairview Avenue at Marion Road and Beale Avenue, Marion Road and Beale Avenue and Fairview Avenue." And then repeal 2778, dated June 17, 1964, two stop signs on West Beale Avenue and Marion Road, one stop sign on Fairview Avenue and Marion Road, one stop sign on Marion Road and Fairview, and two stop signs on Marion Road and Beale Avenue. And then lastly, add to the traffic control map percentage on the West Stone Reserve, one yield sign on Crystal Crescent at Waterford Drive, and one yield sign at Dunlop Court at Waterford Drive. And the rest of the letter is to plating, so assign Jeffrey Sir Mayor. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, we had a couple of additions since that first change was? I, I, one of the, one of the additions was out there on the West Stone Reserve, there's another.
Yes, Crystal Crescent, what was it?
Over, over, over something dry.
Dunlop?
No, the one that you go in on.
Oh, yeah.
That needed to be added.
Where's the picture?
Well, that's, yeah, I can explain, this is rather complicated. We requested legislation to take care of all these changes two weeks ago, and drafting of the legislation, the law director had some issues regarding numbers one and two, specifically repealing ordinance of 6267 and 2778. As, as far as 6267 is concerned, he didn't want to repeal that ordinance in case there was anything else in the ordinance that we didn't want to repeal. This is fine, but what if there's anything else in there? Well, you'll see attached here, 6267 is just that sentence, there's nothing in the 6267, so we should be able to repeal that without any issues. Number two is a little more complicated, or at least the third rap, number two, about repealing 2778. 2778 is the annual or semi-annual at that point, ordinance to update our codified ordinances every year between now and June. It doesn't mention anything about that intersection, it says repeal all of our codified, updating all of our codified ordinances for that year. I don't know that we want to repeal that. However, I did searches five years prior to '64 and five years after, and I could find no ordinance regarding that intersection at all. So, we can't repeal another ordinance, because I couldn't find another ordinance. All we have is this one regarding the codified ordinances, which I don't think we want to address, so that's up to how we want to handle that. As far as number three, that was requested two weeks ago, and that is fine. In doing research to request a legislation, I did find that Reserve Drive, Reserve Boulevard, I'm sorry, is also in here, and I stuck that in the request, and that is in the draft piece that we have out there. And fourthly, and this was, you know, in the mayor's report from Tuesday, when we passed legislation to change the hours for the streets sweeping on North Sandusky, at some point we inadvertently changed it from 5:30 to 7:00 AM to 5:30 to 7:30 AM. It should be 5:30 to 7:00 AM, so that has to be amended. So we can do all four of these things in one big piece, but that's all, that's everything that we're addressing right now.
Any questions of Mr. Hill, or at this point, I will not entertain. Everything you've said that does make sense, and thank you for catching that and your, your time researching that. Do we have a motion to, to proceed with what he just said?
Well, the one question is, what we're gonna do about the third rap and number two, because we can't repeal 2778.
Well, can we amend it? Can we just amend, because the traffic control map shows number 2778.
We don't have it.
Well, my question is, can we just make a amendment to the traffic control map? If it doesn't, doesn't repeal or end an ordinance, but we can just make the change to the traffic control map?
So we'll take that repeal out.
Yes.
My, my recognition is, the language there is a minzy traffic control map, and it's not established by here, five, one, two, three.
Okay.
It's just simply that.
So will we need a motion, Todd, would you agree please, run for your nomination again? What exactly you asking for?
I think it would be to repeal ordinance 6267, dated 2067, regarding everything after that one. That is in that ordinance.
It would be to amend sixty-three, seventy-seven. It would be to change the traffic control map to, uh, amend it as, as it stated there in the third paragraph of, of number two. It would be to do number three, uh, with the addition of, uh, Waterford, uh, I'm sorry, Reserve Boulevard. And it would be four, to amend ordinance thirty-two, twenty-nineteen, section two, to change the no parking of the night besides in HPE Control to carry your five-thirty AM to seven AM.
Mr. Truca moves?
Smoke a move.
Mark, Mr. Keeber, second, uh, for the discussion. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you for clarifying all of that. And, uh, unless there's anything to come, house, to come before health and safety, which I hear done, we will recess at six-thirty-two.
Who sits in for Mr. Poe? Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Six-thirty-two, I call economic development. Citywide County Reinvestment Area Board Membership.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, if you, you have a copy of what was passed with, uh, council meeting Tuesday night, and if there are, uh, it calls for two, uh, members of council, uh, uh, shall be there for a term, a term of three years. I had discussed this with Mr. Poe and with Mr. Truca, and, uh, they would accept this, this appointment to the, uh, board, if that's okay with all of you.
So, every kind of motion except those two is not on the news.
Hopefully there's somebody else on this committee other than two of us.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All righty. All opposed, same time, it's still a little time. Motion passed. And with that, I will say, thank you, Bruce, and thank you, Devin. So, I will call the adjourned at six-thirty-four.
I will call my committee to order at six-thirty-four PM. Appropriation, oops.
Okay, I just called one appropriation tonight. And funds, program one, security of persons and property. Uh, this is in the police department, under materials and supplies, we need to appropriate two thousand seventy-two dollars and eighty cents, which, uh, are donations that came in for Safety Town and the Police Explorers. The majority of the money, almost two thousand dollars of it, is going to Police Explorers. I don't have my little forehead split.
Nineteen ninety-nine, forty-five to Explorers, and seventy-three, thirty-five to Safety Town.
Correct. That's the only appropriation.
Okay, so do we have a motion to, um, approve that appropriation?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
First by Dean, second by Kevin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And she has a second item, I believe. What is it?
I don't know.
It's, I need legislation authorizing me to, uh, pay for airport repairs. This is part of our FAA and, and state grant for repairs to the taxiways and aprons out at the airport. Uh, the total contract, and I don't believe there were any change orders, I have not seen anything come through, but the total contract was a hundred and twenty-two thousand, two-twenty-eight, ten. A hundred and ten thousand, five dollars and twenty-eight cents, uh, will be paid by FAA. The state ODOT share is six thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and forty-one cents, and the city share is six thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and forty-one cents. And everything's appropriated. We just, it slipped through the cracks and a purchase order did not get written, so I need authorization to go ahead and pay bill.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
First by Dean, you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the state tax collection contract.
Did you, did you study all of that? Basically, what we'd like to do, we have terminated our contract with capital recovery, uh, down in Columbus, because the legislature changed some rules, and they weren't allowed to charge their fees to the taxpayer any longer, starting with tax year, uh, twenty-sixteen, which meant we would have to absorb them. Uh, they did, they did do a good job while they were, uh, working for us, and we did bring in probably around thirty thousand dollars. But the Ohio Attorney General's office has a program now where they will do this, and they are allowed to charge their fee, so it won't cost us anything. Uh, if we just use their, uh, collection, uh, procedures, which is, I'm sure, a series of letters and, and that type of thing. I believe they charge the taxpayer an additional ten percent. If it goes on, if we want them to go beyond that, uh, they will farm out accounts to an outside collection vendor. And if they do that, the cost to the taxpayer goes up to twenty-four percent. If it goes beyond that effort, they have a private attorney, uh, that takes over for additional collections, and it costs the taxpayer, I believe, around thirty-four, thirty-five percent. They have the capability of skip tracing addresses, which, uh, if we don't have that capability, the collection agency that we had doesn't have that capability. You have to be a municipality of a hundred thousand or something to even be able to do anything like that. So they have that capability, and they can also, um, I don't know what word to use, garnish, or I guess garnish would be the word, the state federal tax refunds to pay their debt to the city. And, um, we don't have that capability either. So I would like your permission to, uh, to be able to enter into this contract. And, uh, I guess I just need your blessing. We will need legislation to approve it also.
What was the length of this contract?
Uh, it's a continuing contract, I do believe, and I don't think it states, uh, any particular time.
Says you terminated forty-five days notice, but I didn't see if there was an actual.
Right, there's not an actual termination date. We can set up the length of time we want them to have it in collections. When we heard the presentation, um, a week ago, we were told up to twenty years they can hold it and work on collections, which seemed like a long time to me. But, uh, they can take some things that, uh, we've not been able to do and, and turn it to our advantage, I believe, so.
And you're on, and it says on here, you're on the hook for forty years. The, the statute, the, the taxpayer who, who, who thinks you'd be on the hook for forty years.
Mr. Chairman? Who is this? Oh, ma'am, that is, I noticed in here, uh, on exhibit A, they say debt from any type of utility. Uh, I assume that means are downstairs from, that they cannot. That is on the do not, debt not to be certified. So once again, they're doing this based upon what the state sees it should be as number of the next item. It says debt that results from red light camera violations. It's been one of the fightaloo's, it's been sitting down in Columbus for years, that they, Columbus doesn't like that. They don't think that that's, that's a, a good thing for any community to do. So, you know, they make the point of excluding all that from things that they'll even assist with, even though this is supposed to be, the cities are supposed to be making all these calls for themselves. That's a total, my opinion on that. Okay.
But they also, uh, do not collect debt resulting from code enforcement violations, unfortunately.
Pretty much tax law.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Someone made a motion for legislation, uh, for, uh, to enter into this agreement.
So, second?
In first, I'm sorry.
Denver.
Yeah.
In first, second by, all in favor?
Aye.
Codified ordinance one-twenty-nine, point zero eleven, SFE residency.
Senator, I'd like to speak to that. We made some changes our administration has over the last five years, uh, to save taxpayers a substantial amount of money, under the hundreds of thousands of dollars by, uh, eliminating positions as people retire and providing other positions. The person who has taken on, uh, more responsibility is the service director. And, uh, and, and in two thousand nineteen, uh, service director handled a lot more responsibility than that person did in two thousand fifteen. Not only because of the changes we made, but because of, um, agreements we have signed, uh, with EPA. Service director has to be, hit the ground running. There's no school for it. They have to know what's, they're going to catch basins, to, uh, repair schedules for, uh, water towers, to, uh, Ohio advice code. It's a, it's a melon technical job. We're coming up on issues with our reservoir, and so my issue is this. We, from, from our administrations and for future administrations, uh, I think it would be a good idea. I've already made a presentation. I think we need to, you know, um, makes that position. Uh, we, uh, pay more commensurate with responsibility, which we haven't been able to do yet. But, um, I would like to be able to, if, if I have to replace a service director, or a future mayor's have to replace a service director, to be able at least go to a wider geographical area to be able to recruit more, more talent. So I'm asking, well, if we could, uh, expand our residency requirement to match police chief, fire chief to, to the same as, as what those are. So we, for two reasons. Number one, we, we have a, a larger pool to choose from. And the other reason is we only do have a housing issue here in the community. You know, we just, in a situation where we come up, uh, we would, we would prefer that you live in town, but we want to have the ability to, uh, to hire somebody that's already established in a, another community, a local community, at least having lived in the town. That's what I'm requesting, not only for our administration, but the future administrations.
Refreshing, police and fire chiefs are twenty, is it not? Is it the miles or Crawford or contiguous county?
In, in the contracts, we've recently updated that to be twenty, uh, for police and fire. We use both. So it's just a twenty, uh, and the way it reads is twenty from the city limits, so.
From any edge?
Yeah, so depending on where you go, you could squeeze in there for a mile or so.
Is, is it easier for us to make them similar to that, or, I mean, because I guess in my, in my eyes, you know, Crawford or contiguous county makes, makes as much sense, and maybe give a little more freedom, you know, in this day and age of, of cell phones and email that, that we didn't have any years previous. I don't think it's as important for a person to be physically present here to still be able to do their job and do the things that they need to do to, you know, to have the people report them and give directives and things.
I would say that one thing that came up in the last contract negotiations with that kind of language was, you can be twenty miles from Buss Harris and be here in ten minutes, or you can be twenty miles from Buss Harris and be here in an hour and a half. Kind of just depending on which country roads and stop signs and all that. So that was one of the considerations with, uh, with contiguous counties and, you know, it's, you can get pretty far on dirty or take forever on eighteen to one hundred.
I, I don't, I don't need to ask you, but I think it's absolutely fine.
Anyone else? So, um, are you, do you want to make it the same as the fire and police?
Kind of, I think, a little gently. That makes sense, yeah, I find that, I have explanation.
Motion to, um, change codified ordinance number one-twenty-nine, point zero one-one, the service safety director residency to match the police and fire chief.
Yes, so.
First by Dan, and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
I will recess the findings at six-thirty-seven PM.
So public lands and buildings, says. Dan?
Yeah, who has it, call back in order, or?
Yes, calling me back to order.
All right, I'll call, tell the fans. Oh, there it is. Uh, call back the order at.
Six, forty-six, forty-seven.
Then you want to call the law director? You have a separate chief?
Okay.
You have a chief there on this?
A second session requested by law director Rob Rackler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to request in the executive session of the city council to consider the purchase of real property and personal property, whether it is tangible or intangible, or to consider the sale of real or personal property by competitive bid under Ohio Advice Code, section one-twenty-one, point two-two, G two.
That says Dan, it doesn't say sis.
Oh, it does say sis, sis on my. Uh, do I, do I hear a motion? So moved. Oh, I'm sorry. I move at this time that the city council adjourns into executive session with all available elected officers of the Buss Harris City Administration and the service safety director, if available, to consider the purchase of real property and personal property, whether it is tangible or intangible, or to consider the sale of real or personal property by competitive bid, or see section one-twenty-one, point twenty-two, G two. I have a motion that the city council adjourns in the executive session with all available elected officers of the Buss Harris City Administration and the service safety director, if available, to consider the purchase of real property and personal property, whether it is tangible or intangible, or to consider the sale of real or personal property by competitive bid, or see section one-two-one, point twenty-two, G two. Do I have a second?
Attorney for me.
Do I have a second?
Does it say?
Bruce. Sorry.
Second by Bruce. All right, then, I need a roll call vote.
McKiever?
Yes.
Wyer?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Poe? Shaw?
Yes.
Motion care.
Okay, if you will excuse us, please. If you please remove all of your electronic equipment, please.
So, seventeen sixteen, or, yeah, seventeen sixteen, oh, wait, I need a, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Are you?
I have a second.
Second.
All right, uh, I need a roll call vote.
McKiever?
Yes.
Wyer?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Poe? Shaw?
Yes.
Motion care.
Okay, uh, council adjourned to executive session at seven sixteen. Most of it's a council report or any council referral. There are none. We continue with regular meeting, which, you can finish out.
You finish it out.
Yeah. Uh, public participa, any public participation from this meeting today? Okay. Uh, now I need a motion to adjourn, adjourn the joint regular committees.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Will adjourn at seven-seventeen.
What's waiting for, what?